Okay, we're gonna get the city council meeting in order. And we're going to, before we begin with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, I just want to adjourn the meeting tonight in remembrance of Samory County Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Andrew Nunez. As you know, he was killed a couple of weeks ago in Ranch Kamanga. I'm pretty sure any of you heard about the incident. We all think of his family and, of course, the, all the personnel for the Samory County Sheriff's Department of his death. Again, we will adjourn in his memory. We will now go with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, and I'll have our city clerk introduce those individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Paul Kilsmire, pastor from Calvary Montclair, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, city staff, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to stand here and go over the city and the people's affairs tonight, Lord. We thank that you, thank you that you are a forgiving God. And Father, it's your loving kindness that leads us back to you. So I pray, Lord, that we would be kind to one another. We would treat each other with respect. But Father, right now, I just pray that you would pour over this city council meeting. Father, I pray for the decisions that are made in this city would be made with you in mind, and that your truth would reign over all things here tonight. In your son's precious name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Wisconsin.
Let's go with a roll call.
Councilmember Mendez, councilmember Lopez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Protem Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor DeTrig.
Present.
Thank you.
Next item is a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any of the consent calendar items, public hearing being different, and any item that's not on the agenda which the council cannot respond to under the Brown Act. So I'm gonna ask, and you have five minutes. City clerk, do you have any speakers?
Yes, on behalf of Assemblymember Michelle Rodriguez, we have Roxanna Garcia.
Hello, Roxanne.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff, and members of the public. My name is Roxanna Garcia. I'm the district director for Assemblymember Michelle Rodriguez. I just wanted to first start off and say thank you so much to the city staff for allowing us to host our Breast Cancer Awareness Month event at the Montclair Senior Center. It was on October 18th, and we had a great turnout. We were able to service many women, provide free mammograms, and there was a lot of resources there. And I wasn't at the last council meeting, but I did want to thank Councilmember Bill Rue for attending, and also for the very nice comments that you made during your comments at the end of the meeting. We hope that we can continue to bring events like those to the district. And right now, with what's happening federally with snap cuts, our office is really happy to be able to bring a turkey giveaway. And we will not only be doing free turkeys, but we'll also be doing a free bag of canned goods, mashed potatoes, the vegetables. I mean, it's gonna be about 10 different items inside the food bags. So that will be happening next Thursday, November 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Ontario Elks Lodge, which is located at 1150 West Ford Street in Ontario, California. You do not need to RSVP for this event. It is a first come, first served. So we will give away as many turkeys as we can, and we will work with the community for folks that are not able to get turkeys, should we have more attendance than we have turkeys. Our office has put together a list of nonprofits and food banks that are available to the public, and we've put that up on our social media. So if you go to the Assemblymember's social media page, you'll see a couple of days ago, we posted one for each city. And we do want to thank the city of Montclair for being proactive and already doing this. But servicing our community members is more important than ever with what's happening in our nation. So we will continue to do events that benefit the community. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to Chief Reed. We've been working with constituents on different issues, and I just really want to applaud his efforts to ensure that our constituents are being heard. And also, it is Military Family Appreciation Month. So with Veterans Day coming up next week, just wanted to thank our service members, and always wanted to just make sure that if anyone needs anything, if your constituents are in need of state resources, or if they need even not just state resources, we are always willing to help out. And the way that you can reach us is you can call us. Our phone number is (909) 902-9606. And my personal email is my first name, which is Roxanna, R-O-X-A-N-N-A dot Garcia, not to be confused with Garcia, G-R-A-C-I-A, at ASM, A as in Apple, S-S in Susan, M as in Mary, dot C-A dot gov. I think that's about it for me. But thank you so much for all that you do for our city.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the things that Assemblywomen and your office is doing for Montclair. I appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Go ahead. Anybody else? Oh.
No other speakers.
No other speakers? Okay. So now we'll go to public hearings. We have one item on the agenda. This item was on the last city council meeting, but staff asked that it be continued. We didn't take any action at that time, so I believe the action this evening is to continue this to the Monday, December 1, city council meeting. Before that, do we have any members of the public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody in the audience on this item at all? If not, then we'll close the public hearing. Any council comments? If not, can I get any motion to continue this item?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. We're continuing the first reading to December 1, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll make the motion as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then Councilman Rue, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. All right, so we got a motion by Councilman Lopez, second by Councilman Rue. Please vote. And that's adopted 5-0. Next is the consent calendar. And I'll start with my left. Anybody on my left wants to pull the consent calendar item? No? Nobody? How about my right? No? Nobody wants to pull the consent calendar item? Can I get a motion then?
Adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, moved by Lopez and second by Rue, and we'll do another round of voting. And that's adopted 5-0. So we have commutations, and we'll start with the Human Services Department. And I just want to say before you speak, I know there's been several events that I wasn't at to be at. The Halloween event that took place in Montclair Place, the after-school program Lights Out that took place about the same time. I hear that both events were very good. There were a lot of people at the Halloween event, but I'm pretty sure my council colleagues will talk about it a little later. But just want to recognize that.
Thank you so much. I just have a couple items that I wanted to mention that are going on now in November. We have the City of Montclair Senior Center will be hosting their Veterans Day Dance next week on Wednesday, November 12th, from 3 to 5 in the Montclair Senior Center, and there's flyers over on the counter. Music will be provided by a DJ who is also a veteran, Montclair Public Works retiree, and a Meals on Wheels volunteer, that would be Mr. Paul Malacara. Join us as we recognize our volunteers, dance, and enjoy light refreshments. Presentation of certificates will also be given to those veterans who RSVP by this Wednesday, November 5th, at the Senior Center. And the next item is donation bins for the Holiday Toy and Food Basket Program will be placed at locations around Montclair, including City Hall, the Senior Center, the Recreation Center, Fire Station 1, and the Police Department. I also have flyers on the counter for that. Donations will be accepted starting next Wednesday, November 12th, through Thursday, December 11th. We already received a generous donation of toys for our younger children. So if you are interested in donating a gift for a pre-teen or teen, that would be appreciated. Sportsballs, craft kits, cosmetics, gift cards, or movie tickets are suggested options. If you have a large donation and need a pickup, or would like to make a monetary donation, please contact me after the meeting. And this flyer also has a QR code for monetary donations, and a suggested gift list is on the, so it'll be on the counter there near the entrance. Many thanks to all those who donate. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? No? Perfect, then. Thank you. Okay, how about the, no city attorney, I assume is nothing?
Correct.
Did you hear anything?
Ditto.
Ditto? Okay, myself. First of all, I just want to recognize Paul Kilsmire. Thank you for doing the invocation. Paul's been a longtime Montclair resident, and it's nice to see you here in the chambers today. Just want to recognize some of the events happening in November. Obviously, All Saints' Day took place on Saturday. I'd like to recognize all the veterans. I know we have some veterans in the room. Raise your hand if you're a veteran. Come on, Ed. There's more veterans over there. Just wanted to say Happy Veterans' Day to all the veterans here, and of course, all the veterans in Montclair. And my wife is a veteran, and my son's also a veteran. So I just want to recognize all the veterans. This month is the Native American, Indian, Alaska Native Heritage Month, so I just wanted to recognize that. I know that we've been working on our council policy manuals, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a workshop on December the 1. Just let everybody know. I know it's way out there because...
15.
I'm sorry?
15.
Sorry, November 15. I think Bill's not here the next...
Of December, not November.
December 15. December 15. I know Councilman Rue's not available one meeting. He's out of town, and then we have a workshop, we have another workshop, and one of those on the 1st.
December, I'm out of town part of November for work.
Okay. So what happened on December 15? That's the reason why it's that far back, between workshops, and then one of the council members not being available. And then finally, I just want to recognize the, I think the Los Angeles Dodgers for being the World Series Champions. Obviously, I'm wearing blue today, and I appreciate that we have blue in this room, and the council chambers outside are blue, and back-to-back champions. And I know a lot of Montclair residents are very excited about our Dodgers. So I'll begin with Councilmember Rue.
You've mentioned some of the items I was going to mention, so I will not be redundant this evening. After-school program was very well done, very busy, and very creative. I appreciated seeing a lot of the creativity with the young people. Roxanne, excuse me, excuse me. It was mentioned that Assemblymember Rodriguez had her health fair. It was really well done. Four of our local hospitals were there, each one doing something different, each one helping our community. You had a lot of other health providers there. You had health plans there, helping people sort through. If you had a problem with your health plan, you could go over and talk to them about it. That is really needed in this community. They had mammograms out in the parking lot in a large van, and a tremendous amount of people were there. I mean, there was no parking in the parking lot, and no parking on the streets. So many people showed up, and I think that's important for us to have. Other than that, I will just keep it short. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Bill Rue, I'm sorry, Dan Lopez, excuse me, Councilmember Lopez.
I was gonna say, he just said he was gonna keep it short. Since I don't have notes, I'm gonna hopefully I don't forget anything. Yes, on November 11th, at the 11th hour, the 11th day of the 11th month, is what used to be called Armistice Day, if I'm not mistaken. It's now we call it Veterans' Day, where we acknowledge the service of all veterans. Not to be confused with Memorial Day, because Memorial Day is for those that were killed in action, and served and gave the ultimate sacrifice. Veterans' Day is for those that are among us. And 2022, Ron, you were our Montclair Veteran of the Year. What year was that? 2017? Okay, it's about eight years ago. It seems a lot sooner than that. But we have one of our veterans here, longtime resident, acknowledged as the Veteran of the Year for Montclair and the 53rd Assembly District. Freddie, Freddie gave him the honor, so that was pretty cool. So I'm glad you're here. Roxanne, if you could, if you have any flyers about your Thanksgiving dinner giveaway, or your turkey giveaway, I'd like some, because there's some families I know that could benefit. If I could get some, that'd be great. You can hand them to my personal secretary over there in the back.
You can get one to me as well.
I appreciate it. See, I am forgetting. Tag gum. Let me just go into the other item that I was gonna go into then. I joined about, there's about 18 of us, local elected Asian and Latin leaders, mayors, city council members, school board members, that had come out against Proposition 50. And I have a different opinion than perhaps some of my colleagues up here, but it is nothing short of a dastardly attempt to minimize and dilute the voting power of minority groups. The city of Clovis in Northern California, north of us, is going to be sliced up and diced up, and their interests will be diluted into several congressional districts that they would be placed in. There are 16 cities just in our region that would be cut up and placed into districts that they traditionally would not be cut up and sent into. The economic hub that is known as the Inland Empire that we are a part of, which entails Pomona, Montclair, Chino, Ontario, for the first time in its history, will be diced up and put into three separate congressional districts that affect the Latin community. The Asian community, which predominantly lies in this area within Walnut, Roland Heights, Diamond Bar, and Chino Hills, you have Chino Hills that will be separated and taken away and put into a district, where its Asian population will fight for representation and drowned out by the interests of other cities. I've spoken to some of those folks and residents in the city of Chino Hills. They, at one time, were represented by then Congressman Gil Cisneros before there was a rematch between he and Congresswoman Young Kim. And those folks said that they had, they felt their city's interests were drowned out by the larger interests of cities in LA County, because the congressman was from LA County himself. And that kind of makes sense. The gentleman probably took care of his own backyard, and that's not, that's no fault of his own. That's his job. I mean, if I were elected to an office like that, I would take care of my backyard first. Sure, Montclair would probably benefit more than maybe a neighboring city. But nonetheless, when you have larger districts now, what is the benefit of having minority communities split up, diced up, just to create larger districts, and districts that are not necessarily uniform in their interests or their commonality? I have advocated that Montclair, as small as we are, a population of less than 40,000 should be united as one. And if Prop 50 passes, we will not be. But what bugs me the most is not that Montclair would be divided in half, 50-50. Let's say at San Bernardino Street, the north in one district, the south in the other. But we have a relatively small sliver of Montclair, the northern part, north of the 10 freeway. And it's not even the whole portion of the northern half, north of the 10 freeway, that would be put into one congressional district. But only that little sliver of Montclair, which is, let's say, gosh, 15% of our city, would be in a congressional district to stand alone, and the rest of us would be in a congressional district represented by a new congress member, not Norma Torres. That small little sliver would be, remain in Norma Torres's district. The remaining would be a new congress member, perhaps, depending on if the election trends would hold, would be Gil Cisneros. I'm not here to argue the individuals and who would represent the districts. I'm here to argue that our city, being so small, especially the smallest city west of the 15 freeway, should be united and stay in one congressional district. The city of Upland, use them as a case in point. They're divided into two districts. They have been for about 10 years. They don't always have two members that are on the same page with respect to their interests and what they prioritize as their fundings, the earmarks, as Mr. Church addressed in our prior meeting. You may not have congressional members, two of them, in sync, fighting for the same earmarks. Other earmarks might be more important than others to a member of Congress, so there may not be this unified front. That might come from having a divided congressional representation in Congress. But it's not just the Asian and Latin communities. You also have the Black community that is being diced up and cut in San Jacinto and in Hemet. And they now are being placed in congressional districts where their power is diluted. Every single congressional district, from the North Bay to the Long Beach, to San Fernando Valley, to the eastern LA County, to the heart, to the heart of San Diego's Asian community, to the heart of the San Gabriel Valley, San Gabriel Valley's Asian community. That's why 13 of them have come forward and have said no to Prop 50. This dices it up. It dilutes power. And in reality, these districts, for me, I could care less who's president. I know you're gonna hear on TV, this is all about Trump. For me, this is all about maintaining the current districts that were drafted by an independent, although there might be some partisan influences there, but nonetheless, an independent commission adopted when Schwarzenegger was governor, that has been working ever since then. These districts are as fair and as equitable as possible, but they do not, do not split cities in half and force them into districts that were 30 miles away, 20 miles away in some instances. Pomona, for its first time in its history, Pomona is a powerhouse politically. It's controlled the Chuck Bader seat in the assembly in the past. It's what brought up Norma Torres into office. It's where the Rodriguezes are from. That's a powerful city. But it, for its first time in its history, it's gonna be cut in half into two different congressional districts. And that's absurd. Pomona's 70% Latin, so now you're gonna have a district that is split, where you're gonna have a competing interest, or members of Congress not always necessarily being uniform. I don't see this as a good thing, folks. I think the current districts work. We've actually had great success with Norma Torres as our representative in delivering the goods for us, and not just goods that are just extra things that are tickling our fancies, if you will. There are things that we've needed, and she's delivered. So I don't want that to change. But nonetheless, look at the maps. If you haven't voted, look at the maps. They're hard to find, because they're, you know, they're not readily available. But, you know, I took part in a group that has several organizations. Community Repower Movement, National Diversity Coalition, United Latinos Action, Better Choices for Democracy, Still Farming, California Business Association, California Wool Growers, California Farm Bureau, Crime Resources Center, California Consumer Advocates for Affordability and Safety, and the California Senior Alliance. And among them also, LUCA, Latinos United for Conservative Action, all taking a stand against this, because it actually hurts, not advances, the progress that has been made with respect to Latin communities, or communities, minority communities. And the area that will suffer the most is Southern California, right here, the Inland Empire and the San Gabriel Valley. So just take that into account. But if, should it pass, then we'll deal, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, and we will, no doubt, at least I will, at least fight for our residents and make sure that that small sliver in the north isn't neglected, and having to compete by larger cities such as Covina, West Covina, Monrovia, or whatnot, and be drowned out by their interests. I believe that was it. I know there was one other item, but it's eluding me at the moment, but I will conclude my comments with that. Don't forget to vote, folks. It's important. Drop it off. Go vote in person. Don't ever say that there's something greater to do. There's no excuse for you not voting. Many people died for us to have that right. Let's honor them and go vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendez.
Yes, I just had a couple things. First, the Halloween event that was at Montclair Place. I actually had to work that day, and I went late. I knew it was going on, and I went to Spectrum to change some programs I had. And I saw everything going on, and Marcia came in, and she was like, "Here, come on out." And I go, "No, it's all right. I'm okay." But either way, I ended up going out a little bit later, and it was an amazing event. And I got to, along with my co-partner over here, we got to give away the award for best family costume. And, man, this family that won, they looked so cute. They had two little baby twins that just were born, and they were both dressed like little dwarfs from Snow White, and they had big white beards on them. And they were just so cute. It was just incredible. Speaking of Halloween, during Halloween, I always give candy out, and don't have a lot of trick-or-treaters, but this year I had 115 trick-or-treaters.
Seriously?
Yeah. So I kept track and counted them all. And so that was very nice to see. And I think a lot of them were walking to Bethany Baptist, or Bethany of Montclair Church, because they had a big trunk-or-treat event going on there that had a lot of people at. Let's see here, second. Tom Dowzer retired from Montclair Fire. I've known him since he was here. We both started about the same time, and a wonderful man, and a great employee for 34 years. He retired as a battalion chief, so good for him. I saw that Dave Poole and Steve Jackson both came down to see that. That was really nice of them. I think somebody else was there too. I can't remember his name, but that was nice to see him there. On a sad note, one of my old high school teachers from Montclair High School passed away October 23rd. His name was Tim Tackett. He was my drama teacher. That's where I got all my acting skills. And, but really, he was a seventh-degree black belt who used to train with Bruce Lee. And he did a discipline called Jeet Kune Do, which is what Bruce Lee did. But he was also, which was really neat, during summer, he would go train with the Dallas Cowboys and the San Francisco 49ers, both of their defenses. He was their defense hand-eye coordinator, so taught them how to use other people's weight through martial arts, which is really neat. He got me a lot of autographs. Every year, he would do that for me. He was a really nice guy. And then last, I thought it was New Year's Eve when the Dodgers won, because I had never heard that many fireworks in Montclair, but that night, it was crazy. But I know people were very happy about the Dodgers winning, and I think some of the fireworks were coming from your neighborhood, John.
From my house. I wasn't home, so I can't blame it on me.
So anyways, that is it. Again, thank you, everybody.
Great. Mayor Protem Martinez.
Just want to add, as to the Spooktacular, that was so well-attended. I think probably the most well-attended Spooktacular I've been to. At some points, it was, you couldn't even navigate upstairs, but it was fantastic. And there were kids running all over the place, and they seemed to really enjoy themselves. I got there as soon as it opened, because I wanted to make sure to get all the good candy. And Barnes &amp; Noble was giving out Lego sets, little, small Lego sets, but they, it was very cool. And the businesses that participated really made the event such a wonderful event, so I appreciate that they did that, and the city for putting such an event together for the kids. It was wonderful. Also, I was a little under the weather at the last meeting, so I don't think I mentioned that. On the 10th, I attended Montclair's Youth Talent Show, which also was incredible. It was the first year that I got to see someone from my son's school participating, so it feels real to me now, because I know some of these little kids, and a lot of the families in the audience as well. Montclair really just does feel like a big family, a big, really tight-knit community, and I think it's those sorts of events that help Montclair to feel that way. And we have some really talented kids, too. And then on the 18th of October, I was able to watch Montclair High School Theater's production of 1984. I really recommend for anybody who has access to Instagram to follow Montclair High Theater on Instagram, because they are very, very talented. And I may be a little bit biased, because my sister originated from Mont- because my sister originated from Montclair High's theater program. And now she's at NYU, living out her dreams. So they really are also a very talented group of kids. Maybe they participated in the Youth Talent Show when they were younger and got inspiration. But some of actually the past two years winner of the Youth Talent Show is in Montclair High's theater program. And I've seen her perform during their shows as well. But really, anything you can do to support Montclair High, I recommend you check it out. Try to find them on Facebook and Instagram and figure out what's going on. And then after that 1984 play, I rushed over to Lazy Dog in Montclair, where there is a local branch of the USC alumni who hosts an alumni family and friends gathering for the USC games. And we managed to get there just in time. There's different locations depending on the game. They move around between generally Montclair and Ontario areas. And that's hosted by Angela Nelson, who's a local. And I want to give her a shout out for putting together that event. It was very fun to watch the game with a bunch of new people at Lazy Dog in Montclair. And throughout the course of that game, I learned that one of Montclair's staff members, John Seo, is sort of like a local legend in that group. And he brings the Daily Trojan when he can to that group. So I just wanted to mention him as well. So he is very appreciated by that group. But it was fun. And they're working to get the word out for any friends and family. If you guys want to tag along with me, I'll be more than happy to bring you along to the next event. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we're very passionate when it comes to council communication. And this is not to conceal anybody's speech rights. I just need to state this for the text of the California Government Code, Section 549, 54.283 of the Brown Act. And again, this is an education process. No action or discussion shall be undertaken on any... I am not appearing on the post-agenda except that a member of a legislative body or the staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising their public testimony rights under Section 549, 54.3. In addition, on their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public, a member of the legislative body or the staff may ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, or make a brief report on their own activities. Furthermore, a member of a legislative body or the body itself, subject to the rules and procedures of a legislative body, may provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, request staff to report back to the body at a subsequent meeting concerning any matter or take any action to direct staff to place a matter of business